All right, maintenance. Ms. Beatl would like to be your maintenance. Anybody else?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Stellit.
Mr. Stellit? Want to be a maintenance? We have anybody else? Okay, we have two running for maintenance. All in favor of Ms. Beatl? Raise your hands. One. Okay, all in favor of Mr. Stellit? Raise your hands. Okay, Mr. Stellit has it. Transcription. I want to get Mr. Steve. Anybody else?
Steve.
Steve, okay. Any other nominations? Mr. Steve? All right. That concludes our nomination office. All right, next on the agenda is announcements.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to call Mr. Dennis. He's coming to the conference. He's recognized as students of the year.
She's out. Here.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
They're here. Some are here, but not everybody. And she was just saying not everybody's here.
Okay. We can pull them. We'll come back to you.
Okay.
Okay, southern scripts?
Yes. I don't see Ms. Pete from School Academy, but I do see Mr. Wilson's here. Yes, Mr. Jacoby Lewis from the St. Martin's School Academy was nominated by the principal, Ms. Erica Pete, for his ongoing commitment to the school. She's mentioned that anything that she's asked him to do, he's always willing to come forth and do it. So she wanted him to be recognized as the employee of the month. Mr. Wilson?
Any additions or deletions to the agenda? No additions or deletions? Okay, any items to be removed from the consent agenda to be discussed?
I just want to make one comment on the the conduct of school board members that list. I want to thank Mr. Wilson for putting them in the package because if for future references, people just have to, if you read it, it's pretty detailed on how board members should act.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think it's good for the future, you know, people that want to use it.
Got it for Valentin?
But I want to thank you for putting them in here because if we just follow, and I find we have a good board, you know, there isn't a lot of conflict. But I mean, in the future, if we were to have situations, I guess, if we follow that guide, I'm going to move the change.
All right. Now, no items in the consent agenda to be removed or the in a day of motion to accept the consent agenda.
Move accept.
Move by Mr. Davis, by Mr. Martin. All in favor? Motion passed. All right. Finance committee recommendations. And just now I made a motion to accept it. Mr. Pulcher makes a motion. Mr. Martin seconded it. All in favor? The opposition? Motion passes. All right. Before we get to new business, you want to go back to announcements? Is everybody here? Do we do that now?
Yes, yes, of course. We have a few that are missing, but she's making this call.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, today we're going to acknowledge our students of the year from each school. And for students of the year, we acknowledge fifth grade, eighth grade, and twelfth graders. We're going to also acknowledge our students who represented the district in the zone competition. And we just found out yesterday, we have one finalist that will be moving on to region. And that competition is in February, but we have to start the writing process next week. So we're preparing. So when I call your names, students, you can come up and take a picture with Mr. Wilson. Okay. Great. Okay, the first student we have is from Portridge Elementary, and that's Ms. Desi Onazee.
All right, Desi.
Okay. Next, we have Ms. Anna Wright from Parks Middle. Give me other two on here just yet. So we will recognize our fifth grade student of the year for Test Elementary, Ms. Aniston Guidry. Ms. Aniston Guidry is also our district winner, and Ms. Aniston Guidry will be moving on to the regional. Okay, eighth grade, all the way from Stevensville, we have Ms. Julia Haller. St. Martinville Junior High, Mr. Evan Louvier. Cecilia Junior High, Ms. Chloe Alexander. Robert Junior High, Mr. Mario Onazee. And from Parks Middle, we have Ms. Bryony Mitchell, who is also our district winner. High School, we have Ms. Isabel Pottet, representing Robert High School. And our district winner from Cecilia High School, Mr. Bodak himself, Champion Hunter Duca Che. Okay, Mr. Tristan Jacobs here. Ms. Letty Dago. Ms. Letty is here, okay. Representing Stevensville Elementary, fifth grade, Ms. Letty Dago. Ms. Addie Bajeroe from St. Martin High. Okay, that concludes our presentation. Congratulations to you all.
All right, congratulations again to all the students of the year. Next business is new business. Considering our take action with respect to adopting a resolution honoring this bond for a special election to be held in the St. Mark Parish in the school district of state of Louisiana to authorize issuance of general obligation bonds therein, making application to the state bond commission and providing for other matters in connection there with. Ms. Bruce R.
Mr. Grant Schlueter.
Thank you. Mr. Grant?
Thank you, Grant Schlueter. We're calling you the L Bond Council and St. Louis Southland Financial Advisor that has prepared all the numbers for the resolution that you have for consideration today. Periodically, the school board has gone out with proposals to the voters for additional general obligation bonds for capital improvement, so forth, with no projected increase in the current tax rate to service these bonds along with your outstanding bonds. You're at that point again where you have a significant capacity for additional bonds for needed capital improvements for the school system. The resolution that you have before you would authorize the calling of election for May 3rd to authorize up to $30 million of additional general obligation bonds with no projected increase above the current rate of 21.5 mils that has been levied for a number of years to pay your outstanding bonds. The proposition as drafted, as with your prior propositions you've submitted to the voters, provides that you would adopt a capital improvement plan, designating specific projects that you would use the bond proceeds for, and that you would approve that prior to the holding of the election on May 3rd. Any questions? We'll be happy to.
And we have to do a specific itemize, itemize each project, correct?
It is not a legal requirement that you do this. You have done this in the past, and most school boards do, to come up with a project list with estimated costs for those projects. And it's basically a covenant with the voters that you will, to the extent it's feasible, do each and every one of those projects to the extent of available bond proceeds.
And the only reason why I made that statement is because one time we passed a bond, and we did not do it the correct way, in my opinion. We didn't itemize it and list the exact projects. And I think that was 2016 bond, if I'm not mistaken. And I remember Mr. Henry Veville pointing that out, and he was correct. We didn't do it the correct way, and we should have adjusted it. But I just wanted to make it, I just don't want it to happen again.
Yeah, and it's totally within your discretion as far as how much detail you attach to the various projects. But you would have to approve that prior to the election under the proposition as drafted for your resolution.
I just think we need to be as transparent as we can because then that gives confidence with the voters to say, yes, I know exactly what I'm going out and vote on. And don't try to sugarcoat it or anything. Pinpoint it, and if it's a problem, then we need to address it.
There's no question. It's been tremendously successful across the state and with this school board, designating projects and covenanting and letting the voters know exactly how you're going to use the money.
Well, sure, certainly what we're going to probably have to do is reach out to each and every principal in the parish and come up with a wish list, you know, item from one to maybe 10 or whatever. And then the vote can look at it and review it, and then we can go from that list.
I've had conversations with Mr. Wilson. The one thing that I would like to see us do as a parish-wide is look at possibly upgrading our security in all the schools and maybe take that off from the top, you know, come into a certain type of system to where, I mean, it's today's world. You know, you have a lot of crazy people out there. So I think that's probably one thing that we are, especially at the top, is security and make sure it's a safe environment for our kids.
Well, we have a big item project, so. A good wish list, you know, what the principal would need at their school is probably, you know, say like the GRTC, they need to track something, things that they really need.
Right.
Especially at the career center. Yeah, we need to do some major renovations.
They may go to that team that program. The main thing that we need to do is, like I said, is find out, I heard that we have a piece of machinery over there that we hardly haven't used. We need to cater to what we're actually trying to teach over there. So that would be a big plus.
All right, the motion to accept? Motion by Mr. Clay, and by Mr. Pulcher. Let's go. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, that's some good numbers. Thank you.
All right, let's see. Next, we need to receive audit report from Mr. Shofan Company.
Okay, thank you all. You should have each received two bound packages of information. They're gray with black binders, I see them. One is your regular audit report, that's your full audit report. The other is, as you've attempted over the last five to 10 years, it's called the agreed-upon procedures report, which Louisiana legislature requires all governmental bodies to go through, and it's monitored by the legislature auditor's office. So those are the complete reports. And as we've done for several years now, I pulled out certain pages out of those reports that we were going to go over with you. So you're each given a smaller package right before the meeting. I went and hand them out, Penny and I did. That's what we're going to be looking at right now. If you find that, turn the page once, and you'll see at the top of the page, in the middle, independent auditor's report. I always start with this. It's the most important document of your entire report. And if you look at the second paragraph, it's the opinion paragraph on your financial statements. I would just sum it up for you and tell you that it is what's known as a clean or unmodified audit opinion. So it's what you're hoping to get from us, and you did. So that's very, very favorable. It's, as I said, the most important thing we have to talk about today. If you turn past the report, you'll be on page 92. I typically try to go with this as well. 92, and in the right-hand corner, we have a 1F for you. Again, I'm looking at the handout, not the actual report. So if you're looking at the report, you're going to have, if you look at the report, it's page 92. The handout, right-hand corner, page 1F.
Low right-hand.
Low right-hand corner. And before I jump into the summary of auditor's results, I meant to say this earlier. I want to just point out to you, the audit went well this year. We had really good cooperation from your staff. We had a pre-audit meeting that I think was very beneficial, and I think Mr. Wilson and Casey would agree with your IT people, and Penny and I, we all had a pow-wow before the audit, try to talk about how we could improve the process, how we can make it more efficient. And I thought that really paid big dividends. I know Casey and her staff had things ready for us even earlier this year, which is very helpful. Because the quicker we can get in and get out your hair, the better for your operation and the better for us. And so it went very, very smoothly this year. I want to make sure and point that out. Looking at the summary of auditor's results, you should see nine items listed there. I'll run through those quickly. An unmodified opinion was issued on the financial statements, which is favorable. No material weaknesses or significant deficiencies internal control would disclose, favorable. Material non-compliance was disclosed, that's not favorable. And items four, five, and six all have to do with one issue. Again, not favorable, and dealing with federal funds. We're going to look at those findings in a moment. Item seven has to do what your major federal programs are. Item eight, the threshold that's used for the different types of testing for those programs. And finally, item nine says that you did not qualify as a low-risk audit T. The findings begin at the bottom of page 1F. The first one is non-compliance with the Louisiana Budget Act. And I'll make it real simple for you. Instead of reading that, you must project or you must budget your revenues and your expenditures each year. If your revenues are short by 5% or more, it's considered a finding. That's what happened for you this year. In total, your revenues will find amongst your special revenue funds, but the way Casey grouped hers and the way they grouped up for the audit report were different. So for audit report purposes, it shows that you have a 5.4% deviation. Therefore, it's a finding. We've already addressed it. She knows what to change for next year. The next page, in the middle of the page, you'll see 2024-002. The next two findings, item two and item three on the next page, have to do with the same transaction. But the reason it's presented twice is item two has to do with compliance at the state level, and item three on the next page has to do with compliance at the federal level. They must each be disclosed. So seems a bit redundant, but it's what's required. One time because it violates state law, second time because it violates following the federal programs as they should be. What happened here is a check was written for services to be provided in, I believe it was December of '23. But the services were, for some services already provided and some to be provided all the way through September '24. You can't prepay for those services. The services have to be performed before you pay for them, both for federal purposes, state law, and to be in accordance with the guidelines for your federal program. So that's what that's about. One transaction. We tested 29 transactions in that area, and we had one with that issue, and it caused both of these findings. That's relatively new to you. You hadn't heard the word finding in a while, but that's what took place there.
For a nominee, for a single issue like this, if you want to pay additional money to any employees or entity, you have to come with board approval. We had put a deal if it's over 25, but normally if it's an employee, the board got that.
In this case, even if you had board approval, it would still be a fine. It would still be a fine.
The board wouldn't pay that service. It's just a service of redemption.
Mr. Rest, do you mind if I just add? And it has to do with the new IMSAT grant that we got for the MAGNA program. So it was brand new to us. The group that we hired to write the grant is also the evaluator for the process. So this was something brand new to all of us. They, as that group, is how they invoice and bill all of their clients. So that's how, in my opinion, it got missed because they've worked very closely with the U.S. Department of Education. I have since contacted them since all of this came out and sent them what, you know, we found and we are going to reverse the way that it has been done and change it going forward.
But I wasn't questioning the.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to explain to the board what happened and how it happened.
Yeah, I mean, it's not favorable, it's a finding. But you know, over the last four years, since COVID started, you've had a lot of new things around here. And it's a lot to keep up with, and I understand. And sometimes things will slip through the cracks. But what we do is we learn from this, and then this kind of stuff won't happen again, I have no doubt. Any other questions or comments about that? Does that make sense, everyone?
You and I had that conversation this weekend, it has grown so much to where a lot of it, in my opinion, is, it shouldn't have happened, but it is what it is.
It is what it is. The funds are there. You know, you're acquiring a bunch of funds. Y'all have grown in the last four years substantially. I mean, we looked at it last year, Penny, remember? And it was, I forget how much it grew up for us last year. It's tremendous. How much y'all had grown in the last three years. So you just have a lot going on, and sometimes new things bring new challenges. And all you can do is, you do your best and you learn from any mistakes you make. Okay, and then finally, on page 1I, or 95, we have the fourth finding, which is an ongoing item since June of '16. This has to do with the misappropriation of funds. And I'd like you to look at the bottom portion. There is a change this year. Your attorney took steps needed to have a garnishment made against your former employee. The school board began garnishing income sources such as wages, income tax refunds, et cetera. Payments began in September '24. Management will continue to monitor the collection of the restitution. By being diligent and continuing to follow this stuff, a lot of people, it's a very small dollar amount, would have not followed up with it. You have continued to do so. And as a result, you will, it appears, ultimately get your money back, which was the goal all along. And it was taking a very long time. The money was trickling in, but very, very small amount. So good job with that. I think that's a sign that you're taking this very serious, and that's good. Okay, we'll look at a few numbers. Turn the page, you'll be on 1J. Now, these are pages right out your audit report. You see the bottom page seven. And off to the right, where it says June '23, we added that for your purposes, just so you can see how you compare from year to year. So some of the items that have comparisons are total assets, total deferred outflows, total liabilities, total deferred inflows, and finally, your net position. And if you look at your net position, it improved by, right at $2 million over last year. I think it's 1.8 million, which we'll see, yes. No, I'm sorry, 1.2 million. If you turn the page, third number from the bottom, you'll see that $1,186. That's how much your net position has improved over last year. This is government-wide financial statements, which is all of your funds, all of your accounts, all of your assets, all of your liabilities. So your net position has improved by 1.1 million over last year. The next page you should have is 1L. This is your balance sheet of your, at the fund level. And if you focus on the second column from the left, your general fund, that's what we normally focus on. And to the left of that is your general fund numbers a year ago. So again, you can look at it and see how they compare. They're relatively close from year to year. And the second number from the bottom, where it says total fund balance, last year $33.1 million, this year $31.2 million, $31,226. That number represents 4.8 months of your operating expenditures. We normally like to see governmental bodies at anywhere from three to four months. So you're at a comfortable level. And this is something we've been monitoring for a very long time on this job. Because at one point, it's before, at least most of you, I don't know if any of you were on the school board back then, but fund balance had gotten down to a very, very low amount.
I was definitely, when we came on board, it was $2.1 billion deficit.
It was actually low.
That's why.
It was lower than that.
You know, we fixed to get off over 30 years. We need to give these employees a raise and let the new board figure out how to get out of that deficit. That's my word. $2 million, $36 million. I'm going to give the employee something. Next board number comes, two years from now, let them figure it out.
Am I correctly, I got down to $29,000? That fund balance number, your general fund, had gotten down to $29,000 at one point.
They actually had to reduce salaries, right?
I, I think. I remember that was at this discussion.
Yes, they did. They reduced salaries.
And I remember when we saw that number.
We made cuts in dollars.
$14,000. $19,000.
When, when, when it got down to that level, I was very concerned. And I was telling the school board, I said, it's time to push some buttons and make some changes because that's worrisome. But you've done a very good job getting it to a comfortable level. What's that?
That's when I started crawfish on the side.
Okay, if you turn the page once, this is the revenues and expenditures, again, at the fund level. And if you look at the general fund off to the left, you can see we have last year's numbers and this year's numbers. So you can see how you compare. And the third number from the bottom shows that your fund balance this year went down 1.8 million. Last year was 2.6, so you did better there than you did last year. Now, a lot of that is controlled by transfers in from other funds, you know, transfers in and outs. But it is, your fund balance is at a healthy level. And that's what's, that's the point I want to stress to you. Okay, then we have three graphs to look at. The first one is graph A, in the lower right-hand corner. And you can see it's. And you can see it's broken out between non-programmed grant revenues. Most of that is your MFP funds. Then we have your program revenues, and then taxes and other revenues. Taxes is actually your second largest, your non-program being your largest. The next page, page B, is your expenditures by activity. If you look at the percentages, instruction is 51.7%, other support 45.5%, and interest 2.8%. So over half of every dollar you spend is on instruction, which is good. And then finally, your fund balance, as I said, we've been monitoring this for years and years, and every year we show you the last five or six years. And you can tell that we have your reserve portion, which is red, your committed portion, which is green, and then your blue is unreserved. And if you look at your 2024 column, there's a little bit of blue up there, but it's not much. But you can see it, a little, a little touch of it. That's the amount that's truly free and clear, that you haven't designated for a rainy day fund or anything like that. Now, in the green portion, the committed, a chunk of that is internal, right? So that's by design, you've done that. You earmark funds for a rainy day, which I think is good. Okay, any questions about anything that we just covered?
I just have a question, Casey, Casey, for salaries, how much is that?
Like 85% of our total budget.
So we pushing as much as we can towards, I mean, there's always room to improve because I believe in paying our employees, but I just, I was just curious. I thought it was 85%. Salaries and benefits.
Any other questions?
I just want to compliment everybody involved, because it's not an easy task, to say the least. And Casey, Daddy Hope, Park, good job. I think we need to, now, hopefully, by this, I still think we need to come back and sit down and probably start looking at some cost-cutting measures. So, because I think there are some areas that we're spending that we could probably cut. So, yeah, we can do what Richard says, and maybe give a little bit more money to our employees. I know we're at 85%. You can still, if we're going to go off on, we need to show the public that we're trying to call, cut costs first, and make sure that we're trying to, you know, manage our money right.
We have a finance committee, so we all can come on the finance committee.
Try to do something like it.
Yeah.
That could be discussed in the finance committee.
We can discuss it and try to.
Anything else? If not, I'd like to personally thank Mr. Wilson for his cooperation. He's new to this, but he actually allowed me to use his office so we could fit more people and get the job done more efficiently. That was very nice of him. And Casey, for her, helped throughout the job and over the years. And I have no doubt, this year went better. I think next year will even go better. I think we can improve on that. I think we can continually improve, and we're going to try. So thank you all. We appreciate you.
Bush, want to support your statement, Johnson? Any other discussion? All right, let's vote. Motion back. All right, there are no more memory requests. Let's see, the motion going to executive session. Motion for Mr. Jay there, saying about this provisionally.
All right, let me do that.